All right, we can move to item six. Item six, mayor and council membership and boards, commissions, committees. Pam?
That was, I guess I was out of order or out of line or something, but I was wondering if we could do the homeless report first and then figure out where we're, what committees were on.
I agree with that.
Okay, we can do that. All right, we'll go to your report, Mr. Manager.
Three weeks ago, part of the city council meeting, we had a special work session to talk about homeless encampments. Presented quite a bit of information at council about what's currently being done in terms of cleanup efforts and homeless encampments. We talked about some...
Just want to make sure everybody can hear out there. Can you hear?
Okay, I'll bring that a little closer. So, three weeks ago, we discussed homeless encampments. The thing we wanted to bring, and council took some specific action in the regular portion of the council meeting, is follow-up to that. One motion was to approve contracting with focused strategies for the implementation plan as a follow-up to some of the work done with the general plan update. And the second item was to, for staff, to research a pilot project for small houses. And so, really what we want to do is, on a fairly regular basis, come back to city council with just some status updates as to what's going on, because this is such an important issue before the council and the community. So, Rob will be making a presentation on that, just to kind of give a status update of what's been done the last three weeks, and the follow-up meetings we have had, some of the discussions, and also just to make sure everyone's kind of clear on some of the definitions as we talk about rapid rehousing and transitional housing and those kinds of things.
So, as Greg just indicated, it's a complex topic, and I asked Greg for his opinion on how to proceed with this, and we could have come back to you in a couple of months with another hour-long presentation, but Greg recommended that we go with progress reports, and so that's what I wanted to do. And so, tonight's really just about following up from last meeting and letting you know what we have uncovered so far. So, our understanding of direction from council from the last meeting, one is to coordinate with the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services. That one wasn't actually part of the motion, but I took that to heart through some discussions from council. So, that is the direction that we're proceeding. Two is to initiate rapid rehousing implementation plan with focused strategies, focused strategies. And three is to initiate research to analyze a pilot project for a potential temporary transitional detached bedroom site. So, quick summary of our progress. Had a conference call with Director Crandall on the 18th. We discussed the past council meeting. We had a workshop with Andrew Heben, who is the author of the book that we discussed last time. I'm failing to recall the name of the book.
Tent City Urbanism.
Thank you, thank you. So, we had a workshop with him about his experiences in Oregon and got a lot of good information from him on the 19th. Had a conference call with focused strategies regarding the contract scope for rapid rehousing implementation plan. And I met with Betty Chin yesterday for several hours and toured her facility and kind of got a perspective on what her approach is. So, coming up, I have a meeting with Director Crandall tomorrow with the city manager. Focused strategies, contract scope regarding rapid rehousing to be presented to council. I hope to bring that to you at the next council meeting. Presentation to council regarding the analysis of temporary transitional detached bedroom sites. Oops, this is out of order. I hope to bring that to you on the 3rd of February, or March. And then, tour of Catholic Charities facility in Santa Rosa with Betty Chin. The city manager, Melinda Housing Program Manager, and others are going down to tour the facility in Santa Rosa with Betty Chin. The presentation to council regarding the transitional detached bedroom sites, I've turned red there. I'm shooting for that date. I can't promise that we'll make that, but that's my current target. And then, further research is ongoing. So, clarification of terms. In, I'll be completely honest with you, this is not my field of specialty, and so I've had to do a lot of catching up, and I really have to do a lot of networking and talk to a lot of people. And I am the first to admit that this is not my field of specialty. So, I really see myself as the quarterback here, coordinating a team of specialists, and Melinda is going to present to us in a moment. So, for myself, I wanted to clarify what these terms mean. So, supportive housing should really be thought of as permanent supportive housing from what I'm finding. And so, in that scenario, if someone is homeless, they go to a facility that is supportive housing and likely stay in supportive housing. Supportive housing is generally for someone that is mentally ill or has an issue where they need support, and they're going to need support for a long time. It is possible to go from supportive housing to being self-sufficient, but the trend is generally that supportive housing is an ongoing, long-term process. Could also be that supportive housing is done in an apartment complex or a house. It doesn't have to necessarily be an institutional facility. Some supportive housing is just in a house, and the support system comes to the residents that live in the house, and they stay in that house and stay supported or apartment, and in some cases, they can become self-sufficient. Transitional housing, someone is homeless, goes to a transitional facility for a number of months, and then becomes self-sufficient either in their own home or an apartment somewhere else. They transition from one place to another. Very well could be that the transitional facility is a house or an apartment, but generally transitional housing, step number two, you live in a different place than step number three. You transition from one place to another. From our research, this has a questionable success rate and is relatively expensive. Discussions with Betty Chin, she would disagree that this has a questionable success rate. Focused strategies is very adamant that they would even say that it has a low success rate. So, that's something that I'm still researching. This is a progress report, so I don't have any final answers for you, but that's something we're looking into. Rapid rehousing, I was surprised to discover, is, someone is homeless, step number one is to try to divert them back to their family as much as possible. Meet with them, find out if their parents live in town. Do you have a good relationship with your parents? Can you go live with them again? Can they help you as your brother in town? Maybe your brother would willing, be willing for you to live in his house with him for a little while if you can bring some food into the house. Here's some, you know, food programs. Were you aware of these programs? Some counseling upfront to see if you can get someone to take care of their condition on their own first. If that doesn't work, then take them to an apartment that is for rent somewhere in the city and subsidize their rent for a certain number of months. Once that subsidy period is over, they stay in that exact same apartment, and they're self-sufficient. So, you train them over that subsidy month, series of time, how to be self-sufficient. Help them get a job, you know, teach them what it takes to hold down a house. It's important to note that this could be an apartment complex. Before I go there, from what focused strategies telling us, rapid rehousing has an 85% success rate. Could be that if diversion doesn't work, they go into a house that is for rent somewhere in the city, subsidized for a number of months, and they stay in that house, self-sufficient after the subsidy period is over. 85% success rate for rapid rehousing. This is what surprised me about rapid rehousing. It is dispersed throughout the city. It is not one single facility. So, rapid rehousing does not occur here at this place in the city. It's more like this. You find houses or apartments that are for rent anywhere in the city, get them in, you serve as the reference so that, not, you know, we would have to find a third party that would do this for us, but they serve as the reference, they help with the first and last month's rent, they subsidize the rent for a certain period of time in a place that's already for rent somewhere in the city. That's the part that I didn't really realize. And so, who owns the houses and units? Landlords do. Does the city act as landlord or mediator? No. Who serves as the case manager? That's still to be determined. Who subsidizes the rent? That's still to be determined. How is this implemented? I don't know. What else should we be asking? Still figuring that out. So, this is really what the implementation plan that we are going to be tasking focused strategies with. Their task, among other things, is to figure out these four questions for us. So, which approach is appropriate for Eureka supportive housing, transitional housing, or rapid rehousing? Here's a little scenario. You've got a person there, if you can't, if you are an appreciator of art, you may not like this, but that's a little guy there, it's a little stick figure. He is a homeless person in the city of Eureka, has his own story, his own backgrounds, perhaps is a veteran, maybe not, has drug issues or not. This is a person with their own story. There's 300 other people in the city that are homeless. They each also have their own story, so it's easy to lump everybody together, but from what I'm learning, everyone I'm talking to, everyone has their own story, and so that's an important thing to keep in mind. So, of these 300 people that are homeless in the city of Eureka, some portion of them are ready to reinvest back in society. They want to get out of homelessness. They want to be back in a house. It's that portion for whom rapid rehousing would be successful. There is also some portion, and my portion proportions here are just speculative at the moment, some portion are going to need supportive housing, mentally ill or have some other issue in which rapid rehousing really isn't appropriate for them. And then, there is some portion in which the correctional justice system is probably where people are going to end up, the courts or with the police. Perhaps that last group is smaller than what I'm showing. Perhaps the group for whom rapid rehousing is bigger than what I'm showing. My proportions here are not meant to be final. This is just a speculative analysis. Also, part of what rap, or focused strategies would help us do is figure out what our proportions are in the city and how we figure that out. Also, remember that with an 85% success rate for rapid rehousing, some portion of that rapid rehousing contingent would fall out of rapid rehousing and wouldn't work for them, even though someone invested in that for them. And so, then they fall back into supportive housing or perhaps into the correctional justice system. So, one last issue is part of this progress report. Affordable housing is coming up a lot. What is affordable housing? Should we be considering as part of this issue? And so, doing a little bit of analysis on affordable housing, the definition is housing that, housing costs that do not exceed 30% of a low-income individual's gross monthly income. So, according to the U.S. Department of Labor Bureau of, yeah, Labor Statistics, if you take everyone in the U.S. and break them into three income brackets, I'm going to zoom in on the top of this so we can see it a little bit better. Everyone to the left of the line there makes less than $20,000 a year and therefore falls below the poverty line. Then you have your middle income bracket and your upper income bracket on the right. So, the middle income bracket's in the middle, below the poverty line is on the left, upper income bracket is on the right. If you look at each of these categories, determines how much of people's income they spend on each of these categories. And so, in general, throughout the U.S., people below the poverty line spend about 30% of their income on housing, which is right at the threshold of what affordable housing is defined as. So, if we look at the money that a person that is below the poverty line earns in a year, 30% is for housing, 20% is for transportation, 15% for food, 12% for utilities, and that leaves 23% for everything else. So, if housing becomes more expensive than 30%, you're really squeezing out that other 23%, making it difficult to pay for medical bills or buy your kids clothes. And so, this is, you know, generally why affordable housing is defined at 30%. So, a quick analysis, at minimum wage of $9 an hour, if someone worked a total full-time year, it's 2,080 working hours in a year, they would make $18,000 approximately. At that rate, affordable housing would cost $468 a month. Looking on Craigslist, this is just a quick analysis, there are two units in the city limits that are below this threshold. So, we have two units that are defined, and this is just, you know, quick analysis. I also went to Betty Chin's office, and she has a list of rental properties, and there were none on her list that are currently below that level. So, does Eureka have a shortage of affordable housing? According to what I just showed, the answer would be yes, though I'm not necessarily sure that the answer is yes. If you're looking at just the private market, two is probably not sufficient, but there are other channels through which the city provides affordable housing. And so, Melinda, our housing program specialist, is going to talk for a moment about what we provide in the city, what our housing program is and does, and that can help us answer the question of whether we have a shortage of affordable housing.
So, we're asking what affordable housing is available in the city limits of Eureka, and we're looking at 493 affordable housing units with recorded restricted covenants. So, when we develop housing that's to remain affordable at that 30% of gross monthly income, at that rate, we record these restricted covenants on each property, and it stays on title for the duration of the loan terms, restricting that the tenants are going to be low-income and that the rents that are going to be asked are going to remain affordable for a period of time. So, we have properties that are restricted to provide affordable housing to low-income individuals and households or to a specific use and target, such as seniors, veterans, mothers with children, individuals with substance abuses, homeless, there's a myriad of others, domestic violence.
Melinda, the 493 affordable housing units, who owns those? Are those privately owned?
Most of them are nonprofit. Some are privately owned. Six of them are our homebuyers with, that have bought properties that were purchased through the, that were city-owned. There's, there's a myriad of, but you know, you can always look it up under the city's website, under City of Eureka, look under the building division, you'll see housing, and we have a program library, and there's a list in there called the AB 983, excuse me, 987, and it lists every single one of those units. So, they're required to be on the website, and they're always on there. And it documents the funding sources, the, who owns them, who's operating them, that kind of thing. So, in addition, the Eureka Housing Authority, Section 8, the Eureka Rescue Mission, Betty Quan Chin Center, there's other tribal housing and other affordable housing providers located within the city limits, other than these 493 that the city's involved in restricting. So, our housing division mission, which is in the process of being redone, it's not very great. It says to increase or improve the supply of affordable low and moderate income housing in the city limits. So, tools that we use to achieve that are our homebuyer programs, our homeownership programs, our owner-occupied rehabilitation programs, rental rehab programs. We partner with private and public developers, trying to develop more affordable housing units and nonprofits. And then, we just explore funding opportunities, because as they're dwindling out there, we kind of have a feel for at least the major state and federal funding sources. We have a potential for new units in 2015. Most are aware about the 50 senior affordable housing units that will be developed by Danco if we can acquire the home program funding, and they're meeting the, currently to discuss the review and ranking of those applications, so we should be hearing soon whether or not we were awarded. We also have the eight to 12 state CDBG-funded homeownership program loans, that those would increase our affordable housing units.
Is the senior affordable housing, is that the downtowner?
It's actually the downtowner, yes. So, I guess I'll give it back to Rob at this point in time.
Thank you, Melinda. So, should we be considering affordable housing as part of this issue? I don't know that I can answer that question. I think it's all pretty intimately connected. Do we, do we have a lack of affordable housing in the city? With 493 plus 50 plus 12, seems like there's an awful lot here. Is it sufficient? I think that's a question that maybe we need to have focused strategies look at, you know, if we have 493 plus 50 plus 12, and they're all full, and there's a waiting list, perhaps we don't have enough. So, I think we still need to look into that issue, so that's something we're looking at, yeah.
Also, for the very low-income folks, because at $9 an hour, you accumulate a fairly hefty income compared to people who are on SSI, where it's $900 a month.
I don't know.
And one-third of that is $300 a month, and it's very hard to find anywhere for $300 a month, so, something else.
Another topic that's come up, got several emails about this just today. Should we be considering emergency shelters as part of this issue? And so, during cold temperatures or rainy times, other extreme weather events, there is emergency shelters. It's my understanding that recently, we've had a cold spell, and emergency shelters were opened, but not utilized. And so, though I'm hearing from a lot of people that they're really necessary, I'm not sure, it's still something that we need to research as well, and I don't know that we need to pull this into the particular topic that we've got now. We've got plenty on our plates. But, looking into emergency shelters and having some conversations with some experts in the field, and I'm looking into that, so we'll see. So, to sum up what we...
So, can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, please, yeah.
So, what do you believe are part of the barriers? Why do you believe those shelters aren't being used?
I don't know. I honestly don't know anything about emergency shelters. I'm still doing research on that. I can't intelligently answer any questions about it.
I'm just curious, because it seems like in our area that one of the big barriers that we have is being clean and sober. You have to be sober to stay in a place. And so, if you don't want to get, if you don't want to not drink or use, then you're going to be out there. And so, that's something that I'd like to look at further, but not right now.
I just wanted to add one, one reason why they may not be used is because currently they require that couples be separated. So, men and women are separated, and children over a certain age are also separated from their parents if they're of a different gender than their parent. So, a lot of people don't want to use them if they don't want to be separated from their family, which is especially an issue over the holidays, I understand.
Okay. So, this is a repeat of the slide I showed before, but we've got our meeting with Director Crandall coming up. Focused strategies contract scope coming to you on the 20th, hopefully. Presentation to council regarding analysis of temporary transitional detached bedroom sites on the 3rd of March, and a tour of the facilities in Santa Rosa on the 13th. And ongoing research. So, that's our status report.
Okay, questions? Any more questions? Go ahead, Natalie.
Rob, do you know who council members can speak to to learn more about those shelters and how they're run?
It's my understanding that the fire department is involved to some degree in opening, closing shelters. I think they're informed by someone. I know that the chief and I spoke about it just briefly, so he may have some information. AHA has had a lot of discussions at the meetings I've gone to. I talked to Nezzi earlier today, and she provided me with some information, so I would, I would talk to her. I don't know who actually determines what the rules are for the emergency shelter, so I would start there, and I can do some research as well on that topic.
If staff are going to be learning more about that, I'd love to be included if my schedule allows.
Okay.
I think Eureka Main Street has something to do with that as well.
Okay.
So, Eureka Main Street Board.
I was curious about locations and who is, who is staffing them?
Okay, I can look into that.
Any more questions? All right, thank you. I will open the item for public discussion. Is there anyone present that'd like to comment on the presentation? Go ahead, John.
Thank you very much, city council. You know, I almost feel like I'm at a Humboldt Housing Homeless Coalition meeting. We want to start off housing the homeless, but other, unless I'm mistaken, other than us in these really hard impacted areas with the homeless, probably your law enforcement's the only ones out there more than us, yet that nobody's talked to me about some of these issues. One thing about the extreme weather shelter, I was actually, ran the only extreme weather shelter in Humboldt County for seven years in Arcata, before the one opened up here. I came here with our set of rules. Our winter shelter had 25 to 30 people in it every night. We used a harm reduction model. We housed women and children, and not, excuse me, children, women and men together. We didn't have any police reports. We did it in six different churches. You can talk to the churches, I can give you a list of them. You can talk to APD. City council actually had nothing to complain about us. We ran the only day center in Humboldt County, and in 2005, when I came there, they were hated. In 2010, we ended up winning the nonprofit of the year, voted on by the Chamber of Commerce in Arcata. But yet, still, nobody's talked to me. I am here to try to help. I've been working in your community since 2009, when we brought in money from the State Coastal Conservancy to clean up the marsh. We have currently found a way to do it on our own. No government money. We do what nonprofits should be doing, working with the homeless and earning our money to go out there and work with them. I have to listen, and I listen because I respect Betty. I respect all the other players in here, but we're not playing together. We need to work harder. This issue is an issue for all of us. I can help you with the extreme weather shelter. I can tell you why it's not taking in people, because I'm the one who created it in Arcata. There's a big difference from two or three people to 25, 30. We can reverse that if you allow somebody to help you that's actually created these programs. I can teach people how to run the programs, and they took my programs here. They chopped out what they didn't want, and basically left you with an extension of the mission. So, once again, I am John Shelter. I'm sorry I don't come with a big bankroll of money, but I'm willing to work hard to actually find the money and the resources to actually help you guys with your issue. What you guys have to do now is give us a chance. But if you start off the homeless, and I work with them on a daily basis, and you're going to put them in apartments next to our women and children or families, it's just not going to work. Supportive housing, yes. Give them a couple of months, few months, years to work out their issues, and yes, it will. But right now, we need something, and we're ready to go to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Don Smullen, and I'm just talking on emergency shelter in Eureka that I started, just in what I was involved in at St. Vincent de Paul. And the way that works and continues to work is that when rescue mission is full, then they are cleared, the homeless people are cleared by rescue mission and taken over to St. Vincent de Paul, which is two, three blocks away. Men only, and with the restrictions that they have to be sober, no drugs, once they come in, they stay there. Teen challenge, and I'm going by memory, brings cots over and sets them up so they sleep in the cots. There is a limit set by the fire department, which I, memory is 35 people, and this is, this is opened when the state standards for harsh weather are met, which is a combination of temperature, wind, and the amount of rain. You could have a lot of rain and we have a warm temperature, and they are opened. That is funded by money that Eureka Main Street, Charlotte McDonald collects. I think a big amount of it is still the Humboldt Area Foundation founding funders, and they have a wonderful man, but I can't remember his name, who, when we started this program, I was the one that was going to stay overnight, because you have to have people there, and I was very fearful that how would I stay awake with a room of 30 snoring men? And this guy showed up, and he had run a home emergency shelter in Minnesota, and Eureka Main Street hired him, and I would go to the, and leave at nine o'clock at night and say goodnight to everybody, and he and teen shelter people stayed awake. And I believe that's how it still works today.
Thank you, Don.
My name is Bill Rodstrum. I'm a senior planner at Redwood Community Action Agency, and I just wanted to say a couple of things. The rapid rehousing idea has been very successful with, when RCA managed it with Recovery Act or stimulus funding. Not so much that there was immediate housing for people, but there was also a chance for case management, get people working with the mental health providers, substance abuse providers, and that's one of the, the good things that happened out of that rapid rehousing program. But I think in the long term, if I was with the city of Eureka, I'd be really looking at what permanent sources are needed, and I would really always advocate, and I have for years, the need for very small efficiency units for people with very limited income, because the homeless really don't. for people with very limited income, because the homeless really don't have any income with case management. Maybe there are sources of funding that might be able to help them if, if they need SSI or, or jobs, training programs to help them get employed. But very small efficiency apartments that might be in the range of anywhere from two hundred square feet to five hundred square feet. It may seem like a very small amount, but if it's got a kitchenette and a bathroom for a lot of people, that would be very helpful. So I think when you're thinking about what units are available for what populations, singles, single people in particular who are homeless, whether they're men or women, really could benefit with smaller-sized units that are subsidized, so they're affordable. Those are the two points I wanted to make, and I appreciate the ongoing efforts that are going on with addressing the homeless issue here by the city. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else like to address the council right now?
Again, I just want to say thank you to everybody for all the work that's going into this and for all the work that staff has done. For me, there's no question that there's a lack of affordable housing. We have a lot of units, probably full. We have many more homeless people. And however we find avenues for them to become safe, warm, and dry, or sheltered, that's really important. The, the emergency shelters don't function as well as they probably should. There's a lot of reasons why people don't go, you're right. And, and we didn't mention even a fraction of them. But they're, they're, they're only open under very certain restrictive conditions. And most of the time, they're not open. So I just, I appreciate all that you're doing, and I don't want you to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Paul. I'm a transplant from San Diego, just like Chief Mills. And I'm, in the past, over the fifteen years that I was down in San Diego, I worked with Vincent, St. Vincent de Paul. Not directly, but as an employer. During the housing boom, most, ninety-six percent of the employees I had came from the homeless shelter. You have to get the businesses involved in retraining people so they can be self-sufficient. And that should be part of your staff's direction as well, is partnering with business here in town. The problem is not one that can be swept under the rug as we did with some of the other things earlier tonight. You can't just continuously sweeping it. It has to be acted upon. We have new council members who tonight have shown that they're willing to start acting on things and not being passive and pushing them under the table. The homeless issue here is something that everyone in this city needs to get involved in. But in order to do that, this council needs to start taking action, and the staff is making that available to you. But continuously pushing it to a later date is not working. It's, it's something that, in the time that I've been here, I, I review what the council, the previous council has done, and nothing has come of it. There's been more reports, more staff direction. There's constantly information being given, but nothing is accomplished. You have emergency shelters. We have council members asking why they're not utilized. It's also because they're not open at certain times. They're restrictive when they are open. You know, having some accountability, yes, those shelters need to make sure the people using them are accountable. But at the same time, we need those shelters to be open longer term. It's, it's in citizens' face every day. You cannot drive to Walmart. You can't drive to Target. You can't go to any business in this town without having to fight off a panhandler. Not physically, but avoiding. You can't approach an intersection in this town without the same problem. It's dangerous not only for them, but for the rest of us. How many times have you turned a corner here in town not knowing if the person standing at the corner panhandling is going to cross when you decide to make that right turn? All I'm asking is that you take the information that this gentleman and his staff is giving you and start acting on it, not just saying, "Give us the information," and then table it for another meeting. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public comment period then. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, most panhandlers are not homeless, and most homeless are not panhandlers. And what happens, I think, is that people get lumped together, and so then we've got this problem, right, this huge problem. But people are different, and I, I think we need to keep that in mind.
Go ahead, Natalie.
I'm conscientious of not wanting to make a lot of additional work for staff, but I'm wondering how feasible it would be to get an understanding of how many of those previously mentioned affordable units are, that are on the city's list, are, are a proportion of how many are occupied. I realize that they change, you know, there's fluctuation, but I, would that be a feasible thing to get?
That would be an easy thing for us to share with you at the next progress report.
Okay. Okay, we, at this point then, we have a non-debatable request for a short break. So we'll have a short break and then come back and finish item six. Okay, we're reconvening as Eureka City Council. We're moving to item number six, which is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And my thought was on these that we would take them one at a time and just go through and see where, where we're at as far as who wants to serve on these different boards and commissions. So we'll start with HCOG. Of course, HCOG is the mayor's position and the mayor pro tem, which is Melinda. The alternate to both of those is vacant, so would someone like to serve as the alternate on HCOG? Yeah, yeah. All right, you're it, Linda. Now Humboldt Bay Fire-